Hello. I'm echoing. Am I echoing? We got it?
Nope.
If I could get one of these at home, that'd be great. Three kids. Ready? Okay. Hello. Those wishing to address the board during the public comment agenda, item 6.03 must turn in a public comment form before the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Looks like we've got one for the evening. It is now 5:02 PM on Monday, December 11th, 2023. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Etskorn, Director Whitfield. We have student representatives Laura Wittenberg and Sophia Willett and Superintendent Sean Woodward, as well as district leadership team and school district staff and members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also
Monroe School District.
Monroe School District.
School Board Director, District Five.
School Board Director, I'm District Five.
District One.
Sorry about that. For a four-year term according to law, to the best of my ability.
For a four-year term according to the law, to the best of my ability.
Sorry, I was reading Jennifer's. All right, congratulations. Thank you.
That seemed that it would be a lot easier when we discussed it earlier. So really glad, really glad we got to play that out. Okay, moving on to agenda item. Agenda item 4.01, Board Reorganization. Per Board Policy 1210, Annual Reorganization Meeting. Elections are to be conducted in the following order. We have Board President. The President shall call for nominations from the Board for a President to serve for one year. After nominations are closed, the President will ask for a roll call vote. The newly elected President will immediately assume the presidency. Board Vice President, next. The newly seated President shall call for nominations for a Vice President with selection being done through a roll call vote. President Pro Tem, select a President Pro Tem to serve in case both President and Vice President are absent. Selection should, selection to be done through a roll call vote. Waza Legislative Representative, a Director to serve as Legislative Liaison to the Washington State School Directors Association. Selection to be done through a roll call vote. WIAA Liaison, a Director to serve as Liaison to the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. This individual received WIA updates and meeting minutes and served in an advisory capacity to the District Athletic Director. Selection to be done through a roll call vote. And the IMC Representative, a Director to serve on the Instructional Materials Committee for one year. Selection to be done through a roll call vote. Never use it. There we go. Okay. I'd like to call for nominations for President to serve during the ensuing year. President, oh, President will wrap the gavel. I now open nominations for the position of President of the Board for the coming year.
I would like to nominate Director Jennifer Bumpus for President.
Any other nominations? Okay, roll call vote. Director Campbell.
How do I respond to that?
Yay.
Yay.
Director Barnes, yay. Director Etskorn.
Hi.
Director Whitfield.
Hi.
Okay. Looks like I'm still President. Okay. Nominations for the position of President are now closed. Oh, yep, I already did that. Okay. Holly, you were supposed to call those. I apologize. Thank you. Okay. So I've now assumed the office of President. We will move on to Vice President nominations. I now open nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board for the upcoming year.
I nominate Director Campbell.
Any other nominations? Nominations for the position of Vice President are now closed. I will call for a vote for the position of Vice President for the first nominee, first and only nominee. Holly, will you call the role?
Yes.
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
I'll let my name stand. Yes.
Director Etskorn?
Hi.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Campbell, Vice President. I now open nominations for the position of President Pro Tem of the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Director Chuck Whitfield.
Any other nominations? I nominate Director Barnes. Nominations for the position of President Pro Tem are now closed. I will call for a vote for the position of President Pro Tem for the first nominee. Holly, will you call the role?
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes? Wait, which one are we, yeah, the first, oh, the first nominee was just Chuck. Director Whitfield, no. Director Barnes? No. Director Campbell?
No.
Director Etskorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Suspense. Yes.
Okay, then we'll repeat the process.
That's right.
For, okay, nominations for the position of President Pro Tem. Holly, will you please call the role for the second nomination?
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Yes.
Director Etskorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Okay. Director Barnes, new President Pro Tem. Congratulations. Okay, I now, I now open nominations for the position of Waza Legislative Representative of the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Director Barnes.
Any other nominations? Nominations for the position of Waza Legislative Representative are now closed. I will call for a vote for the position of Waza Legislative Representative for Director Barnes. Holly, will you call the role?
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Yes.
Director Etskorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Director Barnes is our Waza Legislative Representative. I, I now open nominations for the position of WIAA Liaison at the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Director Etskorn.
Any other nominations? Nominations for the position of WIAA Liaison are now closed. I will call for a vote for the position of WIAA Liaison for Director Etskorn. Holly, will you call the role?
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Yes.
Director Etskorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Etskorn. I know. I now open nominations for the position of IMC Representative of the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Director Whitfield.
Any other nominations? Nominations for the position of IMC Representative are now closed. I will call for a vote for the position of IMC Representative for Director Whitfield. Holly, will you call the role?
Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Yes.
Director Etskorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Whitfield, IMC Representative. Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.01. It is Staff Recognition Employees of the Month for November. The MSD Employee Honor Role is our staff recognition program aimed at recognizing staff members for exemplifying the Monroe commitment through their service to students, staff, families, and the community. Anyone can nominate an employee for the honor role through the online form found on our website. At the end of each month, all nominations are reviewed and two employees are selected as the Employees of the Month. One certificated employee and one classified employee. All nominations are recognized on our website and receive certificates. Thirty-two incredible employees were nominated to the Employee Honor Role. We'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the two employees that were selected as the November Employees of the Month. Director Barnes?
Okay, Classified Employee of the Month. We have Evelyn Melgoza. I hope I pronounced that last name correctly. She is the Counseling Secretary and Test Coordinator at Monroe High School. The nomination says, "I've watched Evelyn faithfully communicate, reach out, and make herself available to help all students access tests and receive appropriate accommodations or financial aid. She works hard to communicate clearly with teachers and staff around AP, SBAC, and other tests. She gives attention and time to pursuing and supporting MLL students by facilitating the world language exams and connecting them with paraeducators and staff support for their educational success. Students and staff adore her." Congratulations, Evelyn, and thank you so much for all that you do to help our students be successful at Monroe High School. And the Certificated Employee of the Month will be celebrated at the Board meeting on January 8th. It looks like. Yeah. Our next meeting.
It's because I haven't been informed yet that they're the Employee of the Month. So. More suspense, Director Whitfield. Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.02, Monroe Arts Council. And it looks like we have a presentation. I would like to welcome Vice President of Finance. Right, yes, okay, Finance Connie Goss, who is standing in for President Daniel Ramey, who is not able to attend this evening.
Okay, good evening, Monroe School Board. Have I got this set right? Okay, good. And good evening, Superintendent Woodward. I am Connie Goss, and I am here to present our annual report for the Monroe Arts Council and explain to you our activities of the past year. Most of you already know us. But just a quick recap. We are an all-volunteer, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We were formed in 2003 with the mission of stimulating the growth of the visual literary and performing arts in our community. Since 2012, we have leased the Wagner Performing Arts Center from the district in return for certain improvements in management of the facility. And we'll be telling you a lot more about that tonight. Here's a quick list of our current board members. This is pretty much just a formality because we're having officer election tomorrow night and everything's going to change. So just to go over some highlights from the past 22, 23 school year. Quickly, fundraising has been very strong. MAC has made good progress on the lobby restroom renovation at the Wagner. We've made a lot of other very significant improvements in the theater. Excuse me. The Wagner PAC is being used regularly and is gaining quite a following. We hosted two fabulous concerts by a very high-profile musician, a five-time Grammy nominee with an international fan base. Our own member groups, the Monroe Community Band at Sky Performing Arts, have presented many concerts and musicals for the community this year. We started a new summer theater program for children. We gave $1,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors through the Monroe Public Schools Foundation. And we contributed more than $7,000 towards the district's utility costs related to the use of the Wagner space. So fundraising, we did really well this year. We got two generous grants, unrestricted grants totaling $14,000. We earned almost $9,000 in theater rental fees to outside parties. And we had very healthy levels of individual donations plus a match from the Bonavide fund for a total of a little over $31,000. So usage and volunteerism at the Wagner. I think it's fair to say that the Wagner has had probably more usage this year than any year since we've had use of the building. We held 19 events, and some of those were multiple performances. So it was actually 33 live performance days. And you add to that all the rehearsals and the auditions, and it came to 187 days of total usage. And in addition to that, there were many, many other days when our dedicated volunteers came in to upgrade and fine-tune our lighting, our sound systems, reconfigure the stage, repair damaged seats, touch up paint, and so on, for a total of over 800 volunteer hours. Here's a list of all the performances we gave this past year. I won't read through them all. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look them over. But I just wanted to mention how much goes into every single one of these events. For the performances we produce ourselves, the band concerts and the plays and musicals, months of preparation. I'll leave it at that. It's, you can imagine what it takes to put together a live orchestra musical and present it to the public. But even renting the theater to outside groups requires a lot of effort on our part. We need to meet with the client, determine their needs. We write up and issue contracts. We send invoices. We collect payments. We have to be there to set up for the event. We operate the sound and lighting systems, and we clean up afterwards. Tons of volunteer effort, but because we do have such great volunteers, we managed to do all of this without any paid staff. Community Band, they just keep getting better every year. They presented three full concerts at the Wagner this year, and these are always free to the public and always very well-attended. In addition to the main community band, there are several subgroups, ensemble groups. The Bavarian Dance Band, the Jofena Four Sax Quartet, the Monroe Tiny Jazz Orchestra, the Hot Air Woodwind Quintet, and the Fabulous Take Seventeen Big Band. These groups are frequently heard out and about in the community, performing at special events like the Evergreen Fair, Movies Under the Moon, farmers markets, and various fundraisers. Sky Performing Arts had an amazing year. They put on two ambitious live orchestra musicals with eight performances each. Last November, Elf the Musical broke our attendance records for theater productions. And the Legend of Robin Hood drew on the talents of Monroe resident Patricia Haynes Ainsworth, who wrote the script. And the music was written by Terrence Levitt, who is also a Puget Sound resident. So lots of local talent involved with that. And auditions for these events are always open to the public, which gives great opportunities for anybody who wants a chance to perform. So something new we did this year, Drama Summer Camp. Last July, more than 30 children participated in the first-ever Drama Summer Camp produced by Sky Performing Arts and held at the Wagner. These children were ages six through 12, who participated in a one-week program in which they learned acting, singing, creative movement. They helped design and build and paint the sets and props. They learned teamwork. They strengthened social skills, and they had a ton of fun. This program was so successful that two sessions are going to be offered next summer divided by age group. And by the way, to ensure that any child who wants to participate in this program can do so, the MAC has created a scholarship program to assist families who cannot afford the program fee. Okay. So in February, we received an email through our website that turned into a transformative event. We were contacted by the agent for David Arkenstone, who is a five-time Grammy nominee with an enormous fan base and an international following. The band wanted to rent the Wagner for a May performance. We were kind of caught off guard by this. We were very surprised. We were delighted to get an offer like that. But we were frankly concerned that maybe we didn't have quite what it took to host a musician of that caliber. And so we called up the agent and discussed it. Agent said, "Don't worry about it. It's fine. We will, we will work with whatever you have, and it'll be fine." So we said, "Okay." And we booked the event, and then we went into warp drive on improvements. And we'll tell you more about it later. But the end result was that we were able to do justice to this brilliant musician, and the performance was absolutely pure magic. And if you missed it, I'm so sorry. It was really good. A few other performances of note, just, just to mention, these are things that occurred after the end of the reporting period, but I just want to take a moment to brag a little bit. We were thrilled that David Arkenstone actually came back and did a second concert in September, so that was amazing. And then we had our first-ever TEDx event at the Wagner. TEDx Woodinville held an event featuring 20 speakers who shared unique perspectives on topics ranging from technology to art and science and culture. Sky Performing Arts brought us eight performances of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat with a huge cast and live orchestra. Monroe Christian School returned last week for their annual Christmas program. And please, everybody, mark your calendars for this coming Saturday at 2:00 when the Monroe Community Band will be giving their annual Christmas concert. And lastly, just have to mention, we're going to kick off 2024 by hosting Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, presented by our friends at Cascade Community Theater in Duval. And we cannot wait to see what they do with that. It's going to be good. Just a quick mention of other angles of community engagement. We're always very involved with the community. As I mentioned earlier, we did award $1,000 in scholarships to two graduating seniors. And our criterion for awarding these is we, we award these to students who are specifically pursuing education, higher education in the arts, the performing arts or the visual arts. And sometimes it's hard to choose, but we do. The MAC once again collaborated with Pilchuck Audubon Society in August for the 2023 Swift Night Out event. And we made the auditorium available to bird expert Larry Schwitters, who gave a well-attended lecture about the Swifts. We contributed to Movies Under the Moon again this year, as we always do. We designed, printed, and distributed the posters for this free Parks and Recreation event. And we did something extra. I brought a visual aid. We had these made up just for fun. And lastly, we had a tent at the Downtown Trick or Treat event where we gave away hundreds of Halloween-themed coloring sheets and crayon packets for the kids, in addition to candy, of course. Okay, so the Wagner. Let's go back to the Wagner and talk about all the things that have happened in a little more detail. It's been a big year. So we took advantage of some recent cost savings in digital sound and stage and lighting technology to upgrade to a fully digital sound system and a computer-controlled LED lighting system. This lets us do all kinds of things with event-specific lighting effects and significantly reduces the amount of electricity. The LEDs compared to the old incandescent lights, it's just a huge difference. We were extremely fortunate to acquire these items through partnerships with local businesses and to acquire donated and reduced-cost equipment. And here is what we've been able to do. If you want to take a look at the slide. This is a picture of the stage as it was set just before the David Arkenstone concert. So if you look, you'll notice on either side of the stage, we now have So if you look, you'll notice on either side of the stage, we now have trusses for the speakers and the lights. That allows us to use those to best advantage. We received a donation of used professional-grade speakers from a sound engineer in Duval that we've worked with for several years. We replaced, as I said earlier, we replaced almost all of the old incandescent lights with these wonderful, modern, energy-efficient, color-changing, computer-controlled and lightweight LED lights. And we mounted some really fun special effects uplights on either side of the stage. And we replaced our old obsolete soundboard with a current model. All of these things were put into place in time to make the Spring Arkenstone concert a real success. And this has made the Wagner far more attractive venue for outside rentals, as well as dramatically reducing the load on the school's electrical power. I would like to give a shout out here that basically all of this work was done by two of our really extraordinary volunteers, one of which is here tonight, Craig Burkett. Thank you, Craig. These and Brad Fileberg. And those two gentlemen spent countless evenings at the Wagner, day in, day out, for months, testing, installing, fine tuning these systems. And we really appreciate them for everything they've done. So the other thing is, when you have a guest of this caliber coming, it sort of inspires a lot of, shall we say, house cleaning. And there was another glaring problem we decided it was time to tackle, which was the dreadful condition of many of the seats. These seats, most of them still have the original 1939 fabric. You can imagine what kind of shape it's in. Most of the seats have some degree of damage. There were 52 that were really, really extreme and we figured we could do that many. These were, they were torn, they were stained, they were patched with so much duct tape, you could hardly see the fabric under some of them. And so we identified the worst cases. We reached out to John Holmes, the owner of Monroe Upholstery for help. Well, it turned out that John had been a member of the Arts Council years ago, and he was really happy to have a chance to help with a project. So he found suitable upholstery fabric. We bought enough yardage to do the seats, all 52 of them, and they were horrible. A team of MAC volunteers then removed the seats. We stripped off all the old fabric and we delivered the seat frames to Monroe Upholstery. And while we were doing this, we simultaneously started running a fundraiser campaign that we dubbed "The Heartbreak of Duct Tape", which was pretty funny, and some of you might have seen it online. And it proved really effective and we actually raised enough money to cover the entire expense of the fabric plus $40 left over. So the best thing about this was that John Holmes donated his services to reupholster all 52 of those seats. And then MAC volunteers picked them up from the shop, went back and reinstalled everything, and we had it all done in time for the concert. And we're going to be able to do more next year because we were recently contacted by one of our outside renters, an Indian dance school who is based in Bothell. The owner has offered to run her next dance program this spring as a fundraiser to help us continue the project. John Holmes is ready to work with us again, and we are already talking to him about acquiring more of the same fabric and doing as much as we can possibly get done. Okay, lastly, the lobby restroom project. This is the big one. And we talked about this a lot last year. In late 2022, we had been awarded two grants through the city, American Rescue Plan grants, for one for $19,800 and a second one for $85,000. They were scoped to specific phases of construction. And so just as we were moving forward with the permitting process last year, right after this presentation last year, we hit a major snag because we had a volunteer contractor who was going to come in and do all the construction work. And we were very excited about that. And he had to bow out at the last minute because of a family health emergency. And you can't just go out and replace a volunteer contractor. So we tried, but it didn't work out. So this, needless to say, created a large gap in our funding because the original, the first grant had been written on the assumption that we wouldn't have labor costs. So the way we solved this was the city allowed us to consolidate the two grants into one and allow us to pay for the construction and anything, or the labor and anything else that needs to take place to get us going on that first project. Gives us much better flexibility. So and the total amount of the award remains the same. So the current status is that the permit application is currently under review at the city. We have received two review letters. The first one has been answered. The second one will probably be reanswered this week. We've already answered part of it and our architect, Bill Byland, is working through some issues with code to satisfy some questions of the city. And one of the questions that the city had asked was, how are you going to provide for handicap parking? Because there is no handicap parking at the Wagner end of that parking lot. It's all down at the other end at the elementary school. So we, our friends at Facilities, spent a lot of time working with us on this. And as it turned out, it's kind of an on-issue. So we're able to move forward with that. The city was satisfied if we just put up signs like the one you see on the slide, which we already have, we've been using them for some time now, and leave the appropriate amount of space that they're good with that. So that one was cleared. And so the next thing is going to be when the permit is approved, that we have to go to bid. And because we are funded through the city and the ARP grant, we have to adhere to very high standards for procurement and we have to follow all the rules for competitive bidding. And that is a complex task, as I'm sure you know. So the MAC recently hired an experienced consultant, architect Joel Neme of Snohomish, to help us prepare the bidding documents. And Joel has already met with Facilities. He has worked with many school districts. He has an excellent grasp of what we're doing with this project and what our funding situation is and what our timeline is. So we will be getting that job out for bid as soon as we possibly can, once the permits are approved and the bidding documents have been created. So we're up against a hard deadline this year because the ARP funds expire on October 1st of next year. So we are going forward as fast as we possibly can. We recognize that there is no time to waste. We do not want to lose that funding. But our consultant feels that the project is quite doable in the time we have left. And so we are optimistic. Okay, and then that pretty much concludes our report. And we just wanted to add one thing, which was to say how much we appreciate the help and support we've gotten from Facilities this year. And we want to give our sincere thanks to Adam Denny, Victor Scarpelli, and Joan Tate and Stacy Enriquez for always being there for us. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure this year. So thank you, Board of Directors and Superintendent Woodward, for your intention, your attention and for your support of our partnership.
Great. Thank you for that presentation, Connie. Directors, did you have any questions, comments?
Appreciate you answered lots of questions that I had coming to this, especially about the lobby. I was curious about the progress of that. And I was wondering, with the gap in funding between the $104,000 from the grant money from the city, and is there a projected cost? It may depend on when you get your bidding done for your contractor, now that we don't have a volunteer contractor for this.
Right.
Do you have an idea of what that one might look like?
Are you talking about the funding for the total project? Okay, yeah, so that's a great question. Because this funding was intended to just pay for these first two phases, the framing and the plumbing. And so, yes, your comment about the bidding, that's when we're going to know what this project is really going to cost. It's very difficult for us to estimate that. We've certainly made attempts. We have some ideas of what it might cost. But so the first thing is, yeah, we're going to know when the bids come in. But the other thing is, while we're waiting for that, our architect, this, or the consultant, rather, Joel Neme, has already reached out to a firm that he knows to see if he can get us some help in estimating the job so we can get a rough order of magnitude, because that will enable us to go out and start pursuing grants when we have some numbers to present. Because we know we're going to need a lot more grant funding. And we've got several ideas in mind for where we're going to go with that. We just have to get the numbers so that we can put together a coherent proposal.
Awesome. And congratulations on all the shows. That's like literally you've been using the facility almost like more than every other day if you parse that over the year.
Yes, yeah, it's really been an amazing year.
That's exciting to see that much use, especially after COVID, because it basically just sat for a lot of it.
It did. And people were so excited to get back into this building. Boy, the minute that lifted, we were just overwhelmed really with, you know, started with Archbishop Murphy High School coming over and doing a high school musical. And then the Indian Dance Schools discovered us. And we have, Craig, how many, like half a dozen Indian Dance Schools that come up here to perform and they fill that theater when they come. Yes, yeah, it's really something.
Wow.
Yeah. And we hope that we're still talking to this, the lady in Bothell that wants to do the fundraiser for us. What we're hoping to do is to frame that as, and see, most of these events are not open to the public. They are for the families and the friends of the performers. But after we saw a couple of these, we said, you know, it would really be great if we could make this available to our community because it's spectacular. The costumes and the music, it's really something to see. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to open that one to the public. And I'm sure that she's going to have a lot of her own, you know, friends and family and, you know, the students that are going to be there in the audience. But I really want that to be open to where the community can come in and see it. It's a great thing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Connie. I wanted to comment on the, I was reviewing the contract, and there's a piece in there about the guidance committee. I know that it is two representatives from MAC and then two representatives from the district who meet quarterly in order to discuss improvements or any ongoing concerns. And I was just curious, especially considering the urgency around ARP grants and all of the renovations that are coming up next year, if there's a way that we can have updates after some of those meetings, so that we just have a good understanding of the progress that's happening at Wagner Center.
We can do that, can't we? Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Awesome.
All right, we'll work with Victor and Adam to set that up.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Connie. That was a great presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, consideration of donations. And we have Director Barnes, who is eager and excited to read about all of the amazing things.
Yes, and there are a lot this time. So we have Freyland's PTA donated a monetary grant in the amount of $3,000 for the sole and express purpose of supporting student and staff enrichment. Freyland's PTA donated a monetary grant in the amount of $2,122.46 for the sole and express purpose of Freyland's PE program. And Freyland's PTA donated a monetary grant in the amount of $552.48 for the sole and express purpose of RAS Kids for the second grade in the year 2024. My goodness, they've been so busy at the Freyland's PTA. So Freyland's PTA also donated a monetary grant in the amount of $543.55 for the sole and express purpose of the Freyland's Music Program. That is absolutely incredible. Freyland's is getting some amazing things for its students and staff. We also have Bearcat Pride that donated a monetary grant in the amount of $800 for the sole and express purpose of concession payouts to teachers and clubs as listed. Sports Med, $200. Softball, $125. Boys Soccer, $25. And Mr. Bear Robotics, $25. Tennis, a ball machine, $425. Bearcat Pride also donated a monetary grant in the amount of $800 for the sole and express purpose of Brittany Kitt's grant request for funds to go towards paying for hotel rooms for athletes to stay in Pasco overnight to attend a track meet. I know what that's like. Bearcat Pride also, baseball boosters donated a monetary grant in the amount of $250 for the sole and express purpose of purchasing new tables for Sports Med. That is absolutely fabulous for all of our student athletes and their programs. And also, last but not least, we have Grocery Outlet that donated a monetary grant in the amount of $375 for the sole and express purpose of the Academy of Critical Thinking at Sky Valley Education Center. A huge thank you to everyone who continues to partner with us to provide all of these wonderful things for the students and staff in the Monroe School District. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6.02, Student Representatives. And we have our student representatives who will present a report highlighting student activities throughout our district. Laura, would you like to go first?
I'd love to go first. Okay. So today I will be highlighting the Academy of Critical Thinking at Sky Valley. This program is grade six through 12, and it teaches the core subjects, but focuses on critical thinking and problem solving. So one thing that I think is really cool about this program is each student chooses a project that they want to do the entire year that they, that like is fitted to their interests. Some examples of projects people are doing this year are fundraising for ACT, baking for ACT fundraisers, designing a 3D-printed glider/d drone, building a go-kart, making little things from melted silver, I don't know what that one is, but, and then raising pigs. And then they also go on field trips every month. I think it's like the first Friday or Friday. And this year, they're going to the Museum of History and Industry, the Sammatt Hattery and the Seattle Underground. So that's super cool. I was in that program last year. It was really fun. I really liked it. And then the workshops that are going on, I think it's this month or either this month or just like in the next few months, like every Thursday, every Tuesday and Thursday, are Parenting Youth Anxiety, Sky Valley Book Club, A Practical Guide to Autism, Sky Valley Education Center Partnering Q&amp;A and Homeschool Workshop. So that's super cool. Hi. I was just going to run down. So the school's been decorated for the holiday season by ASV. It looks pretty good. All the hallways are decorated in a different theme. And then Spirit Week will start tomorrow from school. We have a pep assembly sometime during this week or next week to send us off for winter break. And then Monroe Basketball Boys is on a three-game streak. And then Wednesday, we'll go against Snohomish, which is always my favorite. And then today, all grades did Zello activity, which is needed to graduate. And then we had our monthly school drill at school today.
Any questions for Sophia?
So Sophia, I was going to ask you, how are the different hallways decorated? Is it like a different theme for the different holidays that are celebrated in September?
Yeah, we have one part that's like Hanukkah and...
One for Kwanzaa?
Kwanzaa and Hanukkah. And then the other ones are like a train station one, and there's like a candy cane lane. And then trying to think of the other ones. I can't think of them.
Oh, that sounds so cool though. I love that. That's awesome. And I will be at that basketball game on Wednesday. I'm so excited. I got to go to the girls' basketball game last week on Tuesday, and it was a little bit of a heartbreaker of the game, but boy, those girls played their hearts out. So that was really fun. And hey, Laura, are there any food, lunch fundraisers going on this week at Sky Valley?
I'm not sure.
What was it? How about the chili feed tomorrow? And then on Wednesday, it's the ACT fundraiser, that's chicken pot pie soup, baked goods, and then sourdough cinnamon rolls. Those are, I'm baking those tonight and tomorrow.
We'll have to go to both of those.
I feel like I just went into... I feel like I just went into a food coma. Listen. Sophia, can you talk to us a little about what the Zello activity is about? I'm familiar with it, but I'd love to hear about it from your perspective.
Okay, so junior, we don't have that much. We have like one thing to do. But freshman year, you have like a ton of little things. It's like a category, I guess. And so like one of them will ask like your interest in the things. And then we'll come up for like top 10 jobs of your choice. And then with that freshman year, what you do is you write down a whole list of classes you're going to each do each year that might help you succeed with like maybe your top 10 or just what classes you want to do throughout high school. So your mom planned out. The one that we did this year for juniors was more of like, it showed me like my top 10. And then I just ran through like questions, answering like what followed my top 10. So like someone doing this, which one? And then like it gives you like four questions to answer, like which one would match best with that. So they're kind of, most people don't like doing them because they feel like kind of like a survey. But I kind of liked them because they showed me, they show a lot of jobs that you don't know about. And I feel like we need a lot more of that because a lot of high school kids don't know about a lot of just more unique jobs, I guess.
For you as a student, do you feel like it helped you with like picking classes of interest or like areas where you feel like you have strengths and stuff like that to develop that?
Yeah, I remember my freshman year, I just liked like having to plan out what I was going to do throughout all high school. Because I like being planned. And then, yeah, I like just seeing the different kind of jobs. I really want to be a equon. I don't know how to say it right, just a horse vet. And so they always helped me learn like all the different vet programs or just jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question for Sophia, too. What are the themes for Spirit Week?
I can check. I think I know tomorrow is holiday, just like pajamas or any kind of pajamas. Trying to say I know it's a photo of it, I guess, right? Okay, so tomorrow is holiday PJs. And then Wednesday is snowflake day. So just dress in white or wear like something with snowflakes on it. And then Thursday is ugly sweater day. Friday is holiday headwear and socks. And then next Monday is snow gear. And then Tuesday is holiday PJs part two.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, thank you both. Moving on to agenda item 6.03, public comment. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As a board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join us as a panelist, allow video, and unmute your microphone. Our first speaker is Heather.
You said there was one, so I went ahead and came up early. So first of all, congratulations to those of you who are re sworn in again. I hope that now that you're continuing your terms, that you'll continue to have a lot of conversations with the public. That's the reason I wanted to come up tonight. I see on the agenda that there is consideration of the revision of a policy around public comment. And I recognize that it is in line with the changes that were suggested by WASTA. That's boilerplate. I get that. WASTA makes recommendations, but you ultimately make the decision as to what our policy in our district looks like. And I would really ask that you reflect on what's changed over the last three years in terms of the public's access to the people who make decisions in the district and and where many members of our community are in terms of their level of frustration in that regard. If you go back before COVID, Jim Langston was the president of the board, and he would spend time at each meeting summarizing the emails that he had gotten from the public each week. So people didn't have to come up and speak. They, people who weren't good at public speaking could just send an email, and it would be acknowledged in the board meeting in the minutes. Everything kind of took a big turn with COVID and got a little crazy. And a lot of people took to public comment as a way to try to be heard by the school district because they felt like there wasn't any other way to be heard. And so now, as you look at these changes, it's a further narrowing of public comment access. You've changed it so that you have to be here before the meeting starts to sign up, and you have to stay through the meeting in order to actually do the public comment. Now you're talking about making a very specific limit to the amount of public comment. And if there's a bunch of you, well, you don't all get to speak. Before you go down that path any further, if you would spend half as much energy finding ways to make yourselves more accessible to the public, I don't think you'd need to make those changes. But right now, there are a lot of people who feel like they're not being heard. And I'm not just talking about people I agree with. People I don't agree with feel like they're not being heard. When Director Woodward put out a listening tour, they were very well attended. You have David Perator has been hosting the special education community meetings. After we've had conversations here about there being a disconnect between policy and practice, and lo and behold, at these meetings, we've had many, many families come forward to talk about how what is supposed to be happening at the individual schools isn't always happening. And that's allowed him the understanding to be able to go out and do additional training and have additional communications. So without those kinds of outlets, people won't be able to tell you when there are, when there are disconnects in our system or our processes or kids are not getting the services that they need. So before you restrict it any further, please consider how you're going to allow access from the community and implement that so that there's an escape valve. People can can contact you. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, moving on to agenda item 7.01, consideration of revisions to policy 1440. Is there a motion? Actually, no, it's just our first reading.
Yeah, so, all right, so, thank you very much. So this is related to policy 1440 regarding minutes at the board meetings. And there are just some very slight changes recommended by WASTA based on a new RCW. So for this one in particular, you'll probably want to review RCW 42.32.035. This is one that there's been some slight verbiage change related to recordings and how long we keep those recordings as well as unofficial minutes and when they'll be provided to board members, et cetera. And then what we, where we store permanent minutes and how those are made available for interested citizens. So if you actually look at the the working doc, that's the one with the green print on it, you can see the new WASTA language and then on the bottom what the old language was in our, what the language is in our current policy that is stricken in red. So as you can see, minimal changes there.
Yeah, so I had a question about this mention of the unofficial minutes. It says they'll be made available to other interested citizens, but it doesn't say how or when or where. So just a little more detail about how these interested citizens can get a hold of the unofficial minutes would be nice.
Okay. Can clarify that for y'all? Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else on 1440. Okay, agenda item 7.02, consideration of revisions to policy 1400, meaning conduct order of business and quorum. And this is also a first reading.
Okay, so this one, if you could first look at the WASTA markup version, it's the one with the yellow on the on the front of the page here. There's an interesting notation there in regards to whether or not you are required to follow through with the posting requirements. And as you read through this, you can see that we're going to obviously still need to comply. And that was really for smaller districts. And I did get some interesting information today. So districts may delete the posting requirement if, number one, the aggregate valuation of the property subject to taxation within the district's boundaries is less than 400 million. So of course, I had to ask Brenda, what is our aggregate valuation of the property within the Monroe School District? And in 2021, it was roughly $9 billion was the assessed valuation.
With a B?
With a B. And now I think it's 11 billion, correct, Brenda? So, yeah, 11 billion. I was shocked as well. So you can see that, yes, we we're going to have to follow the regular posting requirements. So that's not for us. We'll just strike that. The, then you're required to pick one of the first two options. If you actually go to the the working doc now, I think it's a little bit easier to look at. And then in green on page one and two, as a board, you'll have to consider one of those two options there. And I'll let you read through those two options.
Mr. Woodward, before, just as we're moving through that, just real quick on the previous thing, what does that look like when it's played out as far as the posting for the, because of the size and the aggregate value of the district? Obviously, we need to be in compliance. So does that mean that we need to have markings on all of our properties saying this is where the district boundaries are for for properties? Or what, explain what that's going to look like for us?
Well, that just basically means you will do business as usual and post when the board meetings are, just as we currently do now. If we were a smaller district, they're just saying, hey, you might not have the personnel or it might be, cost you a lot of money relative to your overall district budget to comply with the posting laws.
Got it.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you.
So basically, the two options in general, because our district held some of our regular meetings remotely prior to March of 2020, you can, you could still decide to hold regular meetings remotely, even in the absence of a declared emergency, as long as it provides an option for people to listen in. Or option two would be you would only hold a remote or physical attendance limited meetings only in the cases of emergency declared by federal, state, or local government, and so on and so forth, as you can see. So so essentially, it's just giving people the opportunity to stick with what they were doing during the pandemic if you were operating that way before or not. So any initial feedback on option one or or two or?
Sean, in our meeting this week, you brought this up. It's just when we were talking about things that were coming up on our agenda. And I think that one of the things for me resonating with this is I've kind of chewed on it over the week has been, in general, when we talk about policy, I'm generally not always in favor of things that are, that hit the targets that we needed to hit, but are also the least restrictive. And the reasoning behind that is what I don't want to do for us or any future board members. If if a policy has not been updated, is is unnecessarily handcuff us, if that makes sense. And so for me, that's one of the ways that I kind of leaning in this is that I want to make sure that we're able to do the business that we need to get done without, and again, unnecessarily, we're putting unnecessary restrictions. And I'm not saying I'm against any restrictions, but for me, as I'm chewing on it, that's kind of the lens that I'm trying to look at that through. So for me, it feels like option one does that for us. And that's just, I don't know if maybe that's a wrong feeling, but that was something that I've been chewing on as I've kind of been thinking about this this week. Anyway, I'm saying, but this is not for us to make a decision today. It's just, this is first reading. So anyway, those are things that we should think about. If it does actually, I mean, again, I'm for restricting ourselves if we need it to. But again, the unnecessary part for me is what I'm wondering is, if we go with option two, we create more restrictions, but are those restrictions that should be done?
I agree with Director Campbell, just thinking out loud. We didn't know we were in an emergency until we were in an emergency and we were still able to hold remote meetings. And so I agree that it handcuffs handcuffs us less. We have the flexibility there if there's another world pandemic or something.
But our current policy is only for emergencies, right, to hold remote, remote meetings?
Let's see.
Because I think we reviewed the policy like six months ago on this topic. I'm not sure if it's that way now.
No, I remember that coming up.
That's on the third page of the same policy. We talked about emergency situations where we still have to declare a meeting in the case of emergency. We still have to post it because that was, I remember I brought the thing of like, okay, let's say, what is the name of our volcano? Glacier Peak. That's like our volcano right behind us, right? It erupts. We still have to post to me. We can't be like, hey, we're going to do a thing. I mean, obviously, we're going to do all the evacuation things that need to be necessary. But before we have a meeting, we talked about in, or like right now, all the rain we've been having with flooding type of thing. We still have to post a meeting. I remember that meeting because that was my question about it was, we still have, we can't just call a meeting without actually giving the 24-hour notice in advance. And I think that's what page three, where it talks about emergency meetings was talking.
I was talking more about the virtual only.
I don't think we have that restriction. We should read through this again. I haven't seen that on here. But that's, if you saw that on there, I'd like to know where I saw it. Because when I was reading through that, I didn't see that in there.
I think this helps bring clarity to it. And just in case there isn't any clear language around it, the rest of the document, I didn't see it either.
And then towards the, oh, gosh, it's two, three, on your printed document, page four, you will see some highlighted language about written and oral comments, and one is just adding an S. But then the other language that's in green is currently in the WASTA policy, and it was before as well, apparently. So it's not new language. It's just that all the language after that, I think you determined at that time that you would, you would put that in procedure versus policy. But but since you were doing a review, we want to make sure you saw what the model policy was as well. But it's currently incorrect, if I'm wrong, Holly. All of that pretty much is in the procedure. Yeah.
Yeah. So in the part here, right, where it says, insert reasonable deadline such as 24 hours before the board meeting, we're saying that all requests to comment must be received with a reasonable deadline such as 24 hours before the board meeting.
Yeah.
And that's currently not what we have. We have by noon. Is it by noon, the day of?
Yeah. Okay. And then before the meeting for in-person. Now, is there, because I know in the past, right, we've always, if someone has emailed us and said, hey, I can't make it to the meeting. Can you read this for me? We've always gone ahead and done that. We've always gone ahead and done that, right? We've honored that, we've tried to make that an avenue. Is there any way that we can open that up and be more clear about that to the public as far as, hey, you know, we want to make sure that we're honoring this, that we're accessible? If you can't make it, you know, you have something that's going on, we're more than happy to read your comment aloud for everybody. I think that that would be something that's important to make sure that we're, you know, acknowledging those who aren't comfortable to speak and, you know, who can't make it. So is there something that we can do around that? I don't know necessarily that it has to be within our policy, but maybe, yeah, within procedure or just, you know, stuff that we put online, just having clear language. That's the same across the board.
Yeah, we could take a look at administrative procedure and and work with some language that would support that idea.
I like also that we have our public comment before our business items as well, just because this is actually something that in our, we you and Jen, you and I attended one of the workshops. It was that talked about doing that to make sure that you can actually have a comment that talks about the substance of our business items. And that's one of the reasons I like that we have, like it's at the end of our presentations, a lot of times we have kids who need to get home and they do a presentation that allows public comment to go ahead and go. But it's also before our business, if there's things that we need to consider. One of the things that I think from our our comments tonight is we've talked about in the past, we've had town hall meetings and before any of us have really been on the board. Maybe when Chuck was on the board previously. One of the things I do know, though, is that other districts are much, much, much more restrictive in their public comments than we are. And I realize we're really lax in that. Part of it is trying to thread that needle, though, of saying, okay, if the public comment cannot go the entire evening because we have to get business done as well. But on the flip side of that, we need to hear from the public, but then creating more opportunities like a town hall meeting or something like that, what we do throughout the year. That would be really helpful, I think, to allow us to have opportunities apart from email, phone calls and things that we already do. Because that can help us with some informed decisions. So anyway, just kind of like, I like that idea of trying to be the accessibility of finding that that balance. Because I think we can go from one extreme to the other, but finding that balance where we can continue to find opportunities to connect with our community too.
And maybe even just hosting those at different sites, at different schools, to make them more accessible for people within different areas. Because they might be more apt to come to a meeting that's at the school that their kids go to rather than, you know, one that's across town. Plus, it gives us an opportunity to be at those schools and kind of see the facilities at the at the same time.
Yeah, and I think that we got to experience that when we toured Sky Valley together and we were able to have the board there, have you Sean there? And then we had members of our community and family members who toured with us. They were able to ask questions and gain clarity. So I think as long as we continue to offer some of those opportunities. I'm curious if. If we should clarify in our policy or procedure, if someone said, say, they, you know, we do have presentations that go a little longer and they've been here. If they are able to write out what they were hoping to communicate and they've turned in their slip or their. Their thing here by five P M, but they have to head out maybe to go and and see their child in a concert or watch them compete. If there's a way that we can clarify that we are open to reading that. If they have to run out. And so that's an opportunity where we can still listen to what it is that we needed to communicate and honor the time that they spent to come here and and share that.
Okay, that sounds good. I see Holly taking really good notes, that's going to help me for sure. Just Jen, to your point. As a reminder, we were going to start having some. School tours starting in January, so Sky Valley in January, still working on a date for that. And then we'll be doing. Let's see, the middle school, I believe, Park Place in February. So we'll hit a school every month and we'll have some student tour guides and and those kinds of things. That'll be, I think, good for all of us.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, just one quick comment on this. Written comments must be, you know, we still need to sign the time twenty four hours. We're not considering the forums that people need for oral comments to be a written comment. Okay. Maybe so, just to be clarified a little bit because.
Okay.
Because we do want to allow people to discuss or give comments at each meeting.
Okay. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, we have agenda item eight point zero eight approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated December eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented, the consent agenda dated December eleventh, twenty twenty three. Is there, sorry, all in favor? The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to superintendent update with Superintendent Woodward.
All right, so I just have a couple of updates this evening and we will start with enrollment first. Before I do, you'll see on the enrollment slide a picture of some students from the play Thirty Nine Steps. My wife and I went on Saturday and thoroughly enjoyed the the high school drama department, their adaptation of the, it's a nineteen thirty five British spy thriller film. We saw this play once at the Spokane Civic Theater and about a year ago. So it was coincidental that our kids were doing it here and we were thoroughly confused the first time we saw it. Maybe it takes two times, but my wife and I loved this. This adaptation was much more interesting. The students did fantastic lot. I mean, I was always amazed at how competent our drama kids are and. Just their wonderful interaction with the crowd. It was like spot on for sure. And I can't wait to see what they do next. I'm not sure what's on, what's what's happening next with that, but it was just fantastic. So kudos to them. Our enrollment, not surprising, our enrollment is relatively flat. Flat is good for sure. You can see that there's a little bit of an upswing in some of our elementary schools. A little drop at Monroe High School, which is standard throughout the year across the state of Washington, probably nationwide. It's kind of typical for for high school enrollments. I'm confident is that as we continue charting a path through the future and we continue to address some of the challenges that we have here, as well as some of the wonderful opportunities that are ahead of us. We're going to begin picking students up again. Obviously, we had a lot of students. More than the state average leave our district and go to private schools, et cetera. I'm just very confident that we're going to see a shift there. It may be interesting at another board meeting for, I'm doing a little bit of research as far as where where did those students go, right? I think it'd be interesting to know specifically where did they go, which we have all of that information. So that I'll tie that to an enrollment report here soon. The next up, I have monthly attendance and as well as. The picture of these kids at Frank Wagner, I had mentioned at a previous meeting that some of our schools have activities to express their gratitude for our local first responders and all the work that they do for our community. And I thought you'd much rather see these students and then listen to me. So you can be just continue to be distracted. That's right. The as far as attendance is concerned, you can see that we were a little lower in the month of November. This is normal. We always start strong and there's a little bit of a decrease. So you can see that by school. You know that this is a huge focus area for us. Last month, we saw some a nice increase, a modest increase in our October attendance. So I want to show you our November attendance this year as compared to last November. A very big increase, very, very positive. I I am so darn impressed with our staff and the work that they are doing and it's very encouraging. So and I think it should be for you all as well, you know, we're really focused on increasing attendance. Because we know that attendance and whether kids are attending regularly is tied to how they how engaged they are in school and school activities. And whether or not there's a strong sense of belonging and all of that impacts student learning. So I like the fact that we're working on attendance for many reasons. One of the reasons is just that we can measure that every single day. It's very different than student learning and when we get some better checks and balances tied to student learning, that's going to really help. But this allows us to be fluid and really determine which activities are having the desired impact on student attendance. So that's huge there. So I just want to thank our district staff that are working on this and our building staff. And let me just give you, so I've been asked, and you heard some of the things last month about what some of the strategies our schools are using. And so I just randomly picked a couple of principles and I asked them, well, what do you think is making the biggest difference? So I happened to meet with Brett and Jeff out at Frylands. And right away, Jeff said, well. We this year are implementing a check in system with our students and they have a list of thirty to forty students that maybe struggled a bit with attendance last year. And they've taken their entire staff, including office staff, custodians, teachers, pares, you name it. And they have determined which adults are going to do check ins with which kids that it might be struggling a little bit. And they're simply checking in on kids and how you doing today? Did you have a nice weekend? And just little things that make a big difference. And Jeff was really confident that's 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 one of the things that are helping there. And and Brett mentioned. Some of those kinds of things he mentioned, Ashley T S S Obo specifically, and some of her engagement work with kids, calling homes, checking on kids in their classrooms, et cetera. But yeah, so anyways, a great progress made there for sure. And then that's a picture of the Frylands Elementary Kids celebrating the veterans in their community. And there were so many cool things done for our veterans. And I have to say, if you look at the play, you look at what our kids are doing for first responders, some of the Veterans Day assemblies, having Matt come and present today. One of the reasons I wanted to live and work in a kind of a smaller community like this, it's just outstanding. So proud of our our staff, hopefully December, we'll see similar results. Next month or early February. We'll be looking at some learning data. So this is our first opportunity to see that at the midpoint in the school year, as you know, we use iReady and we do that assessment in January. It's our only broad scale assessment that we do, that we can do a. Check midyear and 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 the idea is to make some adjustments based on what we're seeing for the remainder of the year. That's now, I as we move forward, we'll be looking at our assessment systems, system wide. And is there something that we can do monthly? What are our checks and balances? Individual teachers do those things already, but from a system standpoint, not so much. So those are some of the things that will come out in our strategic plan as well. So we'll hit some of the learning things probably early February. And then Brenda, Jen, you asked me about this, I think it was to, we'll also be going over in January, how we're doing from a financial perspective. As related to month to month, our spending up against our anticipated ending fund balance. That's all I have for today.
Any questions? Thank you, Sean. Okay, moving on to agenda item ten point zero one, board reports and or comments. Would you like to go first, Director Etskorn?
Yes, yes, I would. Um, my comments are focused on a rising number of what I'll call incidents of hate in our school districts, in our school district. So as many of you know, Sky Valley was broken into a couple of weeks ago. There's vandalism, hate speech written on the wall. There was an incident last week at Park Place Middle School volleyball game between two parents, you know, shouting at each other and hate speech was said. There's an incidence at Monroe High School where some students, you know, wrote hate speech in the school newspaper in the margins and distributed to students. Um, I just want to say that, you know, we as a community need to speak up and, you know, fight this hate speech. Especially with an election year coming up, you know, the divisive rhetoric is going to increase. And. I just want to say that we have more in common than different. And and I know the people, you know, come to this meeting, listening to me now, you know, are people that care very much about our education. Care very much about our students. And, you know, it's up to us to. To don't let hate be the loudest voice. So that's what I just want to talk about.
Thank you, Director Etskorn. Director Barnes.
Thank you for that, James, just a continuation of parents and community partnering with us for the betterment of our students and the betterment of our community. I love it. So and may kindness be the loudest voice that our community and our students hear. So. Coming up this weekend, we have Rees Across America on Saturday the sixteenth at eight thirty A M. And then after that, you can catch the. Monroe Community Band Christmas Concert at two P M. So but with the Rees Across America, I will be up there with my kids. It's just a great time, as I know, I I always say, just to remember and honor those who've given so much for our country. Winter sports are well underway, our athletes are doing amazing things and it is a joy and a privilege to be able to go and watch them. I don't get to do it as often as I would like to, but I thoroughly enjoy every time I get to go and take my kids with me. So I'm very much looking forward to boys' basketball this week. I encourage you, if you haven't been out yet, to support our student athletes in one of their winter sports. Go do it, it's a really good time and you can meet some incredibly incredible community members while you're there. So and the other thing I'll just end with is just want to wish everyone happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, whatever it is that you celebrate. Or however you honor this season, I wish you the very best into the new year.
Appreciate Director Etskorn's comments, echo those, thank you for saying what you said. And I know that for parents, we recently received from the elementary schools and middle high schools about attendance encouraging families. And I think that part of it too is we do have a, I love seeing the trend date, even though we've dipped from October to November, but comparative from previous year. Because I know that there's been a lot of COVID and R S V and other flu and things going around hitting a lot of families. So one, stay safe and continue to wash your hands and stay hydrated. But also I think that it's really important to hear, you know, the importance of kindness and being patient with one another. Because even just at the literally the darkest time of the year, just because of daylight, a lot of that affects moods and things like that, just because of lack of sunlight and that we continue to take care of ourselves. And that helps us to be able to take care of others as well. So I think I think getting involved and having our kids get involved in physical activities and stuff like that is like some of our sports is also super important. But appreciate Superintendent Woodward for sharing that the attendance data, because I think I appreciate being able to continue to watch that trend data. So thank you.
Superintendent Woodward and myself are going to be speaking at Chamber Commerce Meeting tomorrow. And give an update about the strategic plan. I'm going to talk about the history of Monroe and the vital role that the school has played in that. I had an interesting opportunity to be a teacher for a short period of time. I went, we revisited. At a Rotary Meeting months ago, I volunteered to have the. By the by the Northwest Educational Association, one eighty nine, I volunteered to have have students come by our office and look at our operation. Excuse me. So last week, we had some students from C T E and. They're in conjunction with Education District. And I'd assumed there was going to be like maybe eight or ten students come, well, there was twenty five students. And we have a small office, I have an office in the back and one up front. And so we divided them in two. And my son took them up front and told them about licensing and showed them plates and tabs and showed them our safe, which was, everybody was really thrilled with that. But but an eight year old safe, that was like a like a tank. In the back, I was talking to students. Brenda, you'd appreciate this, I talked about gross income, expenses, net income, and reviewing things on a quarterly basis and comparing from last year. What I put it in simple terms, you make money, you have to pay it out and then expenses. And then what's left over is the money you take home. And I made the point that if they ever go into business themselves, they're going to be faced with these these basic. And I made the point that if they ever go into business themselves, they're going to be faced with these, these basic, basic items they have to evaluate. And if they work for a company, they will be evaluating the wages and the expenses based on those simple principles. Whether, you know, students want to start a business, you know, internet or build or manufacture something. It's how much money you make, how much your expenses are. I asked the students, I go, what do you, what do you think your most expensive cost is in running a business? And just one student piped up and he said, computers. It's payroll. Payroll is always the main driving item of a, of a business. Anyway, it was, so I'm thinking since I did such a good job, I think I'm going to apply as a teacher. I think based on my prior experience, I could teach business or one of many courses. So, you know, be sure to see my application coming in. But I, I enjoyed meeting with the students and just talking to them and, and showed them our little business. And one of the many businesses that are in Monroe, part of the community that they'll be a part of someday.
Thank you, Director Whitfield. I will make it short and sweet. I was able to attend BSU and LSU meetings or get together. So it's the Black Student Union and the Latino Union last week. Those were really neat. Thank you both, or think, I just want to thank both groups for allowing me to enter that space and just being, there were lots of really honest, vulnerable conversations. And yeah, it was, it was such a special place to be inside. Just thank you for allowing me to be there and participate in some of them. The LSU was their Friendsgiving and they had Tamales and Bandulce. I can't do gluten, so I just watched everyone eat and then asked them how good it was. I do it with Director Barnes all the time. And then I was also able to attend the MLL. They had a first time like MLL parent meeting. I ran into one of the APs at the LSU meeting who invited me to an MLL parent meeting the following day. And so we had a few parents come in who spoke mostly Spanish. It's really neat to kind of hear their stories and their interactions with, at some of our schools. And the successes as well that they've seen with their own students and how it works. And shout out to especially the Monroe High School staff that we have at the front desk and counseling office. So Evelyn, who was actually our person, our certificated staff of the month. Because they've done such a great job and have made such tremendous connections within the Latino community and have helped change the trajectory for these children. So I just wanted to, to shout them out as well. And then our MLL up at the high school who helped, helped me understand what that new role looked like, quite honestly. So that was, that was neat as well. And I look forward to security updates in the new year as well. And to Director Etskorn's point, just about keeping kids safe. That's a high priority in our school district and making kids feel safe. And so I look forward to that meeting. And this weekend we have Casey's big giveaway, the gifts giveaway up at the Evergreen Speedway. And then we also have Take the Next Step. It's serving over 400 individuals in our community so that they can get gifts this weekend. So if you are looking to give in any areas, there are so many opportunities in our community. And I am so thankful to live in a community that believes in giving and loving and supporting one another. So there's always lots we can do better, but there are also really great things happening that I am grateful for. And it is 6:34 PM. Tonight's meeting is adjourned.